As a first order of business, noting that there is a problem. Is our first order of business, again, due to the absence of a chair, we need to appoint a temporary chair? Are there any motions or nominations?
Mr. Attorney, should we just do roll call first?
Yeah, we could. I mean, yes, we could do a roll call if we want to. Would you mind calling the roll?
Sure. Chair and approach.
What's that?
Did you call me?
Sorry.
What?
Oh. Oh, Rappich.
Rappich. Chairman Egger?
Here.
Chairman Rosetti?
Here.
Um, sorry. Commissioner Frillman?
Great.
And Commissioner Duhy right here.
So again, we do have a quorum, obviously, as we stated before, and due to the absence of a chair, we need to make a motion to appoint a temporary chair.
Counsel, I'd like to make a motion to appoint a temporary chair. Mr. Frillman, if he's willing.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Would you cover all?
Uh.
You just call me later. It's okay. Aye.
Commissioner Egger? Aye. Commissioner Rosetti?
Aye.
Commissioner Frillman?
You can go for yourself.
And Commissioner Duhy, aye, yes.
Mr. Chair, one selection. Congratulations, sir. A temporary chair was still decided, so you may not have. Normally, you're the secretary. It might be easier if you ask for a motion that someone serves the reporting secretary. Reporting secretary.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Ms. Duhy, temporary secretary, if she's willing.
I second it.
All right. Uh.
So I always do roll calls.
Roll call. Chairman Rappich?
Aye.
Chairman Egger?
Aye.
Chairman Rosetti?
Aye.
Chairman, or Chairman, goodness. Commissioner Frillman?
Aye.
Um, and I, yes.
We will change.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Hello. Can I simply stand for pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I've reviewed the meeting minutes from August 26. Corrections. Make a motion, please, the meeting minutes from August 26 to 24.
Make the motion.
Well, second.
Well, um. Commissioner Rappich?
Aye.
Commissioner Egger?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosetti?
Aye.
Commissioner Frillman?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
All right. So we have public comments. Have more people signed up? Do any of them have anything?
No, we're just public comments, but you have a public hearing.
Okay. This is not for a public hearing, this is normal public comments. Shouldn't be over here, right?
It's a public hearing, but I believe they just sign up for public.
Yeah, they just don't kind of have to feel public hearing.
So, Jim, group?
Well, I would just like to be able to speak after there's a presentation of what is being proposed of.
So you want to defer your time to do the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, your final thing, Fred.
Yep. All right. Um, see. Gabriela Rodriguez?
Um, yeah. I, I just wanted to be able to respond in regards to the.
So you want to defer your time to one of the public hearing, Chris? Is the chair doing a roll call with that?
Thank you.
Doug?
Right here. I would like to be at the same.
No problem, no problem.
Um.
Jury.
Jury?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Right. And then, so we're reporting a public hearing at 7:05.
Do you want a motion or would you just go? I guess I need a motion for a public hearing. Do I motion open?
Yeah. The second.
Well, um, and, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion to go ahead and open up the public hearing, please.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry.
All right.
I'm in favor.
I'm.
Anybody? Public hearing is open.
All right.
So, Jim?
Yes.
Well, do you want to petition? Who's? No, are you gonna present for a petition?
Yeah. Present, and then Mr. Dan Oleson's also here. He's a petition representing owners representative on the property. So he has the proposition to give questions myself, and also answer them. Um, Crown Development, which is property owners Hampshire West LLC. Um, as you know, the development of Prairie Ridge neighborhood along with some home builders. As part of the annexation agreement, they were to donate the 29 acre park to Hampshire Township Park District. As part of that, um, donation to do certain improvements in the cost of $65,000. Um, as part of the discussion with the park district, the park district stated the most needed improvements that right now were multi-use path and a parking lot for what they will use for fall fields or soccer fields at the Kelly Road Park. Um. The park district is completing a master plan for the Kelly Road Park right now. It's under ongoing right now. I asked the park district to some information on when they expect that completed. Or they have any preliminary information they wanted at this point to share with the public. So I couldn't bring any, like, in 20 days it'll be finished or 20 weeks it'll be finished. That is unsure when the master plan will be finished. Um, the master plan will dictate when permanent location of the parking lot will be. Um, and that may differ from where the proposed location of the gravel parking lot is right now. Um, in terms of the property, um, it is surrounded to the north and west. Uh, it is surrounded by a stormwater detention area. To the south is unincorporated residential use and to the east is farming or agricultural use, based on my knowledge. Uh, the findings on commission did recently recommend approval of the same areas because of two other properties. Um, but with the condition of gravel parking lot, it'll be only allowed for a three-year period. Uh, staff did review the findings of fact. They found that it didn't meet the findings of fact, in staff's opinion. Um, I can go in detail if you like on the findings of facts, if right. Um, but other than that, and there was a lower support received by the park district on behalf of application. If there's any question that we have to answer, I can turn it over to Mr. Oleson for additional information if you want.
I just have one question. Where would the parking lot be on the property and access this off of Kelly Road?
Uh, I will turn it over to Mr. Oleson, who can provide better insight on that.
Sure. Uh, yeah, pardon.
What's that?
You swear to it? Oh, sure. You don't mean, you don't have to. Do you swear? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And though I assume everything you said was the truth, the whole truth.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, my name is Dan Oleson, Crown Community Development. Um, as more than mentioned, we are obligated to be uh, improve and de-park over to the park district, the 29 acre park along Kelly Road. Um, that is our intention. It's also part of the same annexation agreement to make $65,000 worth of improvements in the park. Um, the actual parking lot and bike path at the park district, we work very diligently with park district. We have a good relationship with them, and that's what they, their desire was for a parking lot and and, um, paved paths that connects to our path system within Prairie Ridge. Um, and, but the, uh, so the cost of it is actually more than $65,000, and that is our obligation. And so that is what we is constructing out there right now. And it is actually, the entrance is right next to, if you look at the map, on your first page or your packet, the entrance is just east of the gas, uh, company outlot on Kelly Road. And the access is directly through Kelly Road. And then the parking lot is just to the mark down to see that entrance.
So the property is outlined in blue here, and you're talking about the access being just east of this little notch cut out?
Correct.
Okay, and the parking lot being fairly close to Kelly Road?
Correct. You know, um, there was a bit of urgency on the park district part, and our desire is to go over to the park district as soon as we can. Um, and it's their desire to take it as soon as they can, because they do have um, a desire to utilize that part for fall sports programs. They're in dire need of it right now. They run out of space within the district.
For fall, what?
Fall sports programs. Soccer, football, listening to this. And there was also a concern about, um, if we needed it over without that parking lot in there, the only other option would be parking along Kelly Road, and there is not sufficient for state parking along Kelly Road right now. So that really was just to afford a parking lot, the off-street parking lot.
And you touched on it, I apologize. What's, what is this property that's in that notch that's cut into this?
It's the gas company. Uh, there's a major pipeline that runs through our property.
Ah.
Uh, it will be the west, and that's one of their stations. They have an access directly on it, as you can see there, an access directly in Kelly Road.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Can I ask another question?
Good.
Um, for the use of the, for the park district, is there minimum parking requirements and rezoning ordinance that are in place?
Not for open ball fields.
Not for ball fields?
Yeah. If there was a structure like a recreation center or community center, then there is, but not for just ball fields. I guess everybody to speak up. This is the last, I can't hear. Sorry. So there aren't any parking requirements for open ball fields? If there was a recreation center or community center, then there will be parking requirements, but again, not for ball fields.
So, help me understand, how many vehicles would it have to accommodate?
There's no minimum requirement. They'll be up to the park district to determine what they think is best. Does anybody from the park district here to speak today?
I did speak with the executive director, unfortunately, I believe she has her, her meeting tonight as well, so she was not able to attend.
And she couldn't send the representative?
Um, I can't speak for her, I'm sorry. She did, she did obviously, and sent the lawyer.
Just wanted on the record that the park district is not here.
I think that's.
Any other questions?
Sir. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You got nothing else to add?
Nothing else to add, no.
You could, uh, either when they step up or everyone, see their.
Okay. You want to stand or? Okay. My name's Kim Krug. I.
We're gonna swear.
Okay.
Oh, you go. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Um, Mr. Chair, with your leg, normally everybody stands at the podium with your leg, but it'd be easier for you.
I'm fine. I'll be okay.
Okay.
Um, I guess my question that no one asked yet is why? There are two parking lots, ones for dog park, I presume, on the west side of the pumping station. And this parking lot for 29 acres of ball field is on the east side. The west side has been paved. Why wouldn't we be paving the other side when there's going to be far more use in 29 acres of ball fields? Then and why wouldn't you just, they've already done one side, why wouldn't you do the other? And why would you make the Hampshire pay for paving that later? Or when they would be paid, they would be paid for now by Crown? I don't, I don't understand why we aren't just paving it and, and the, have you had been out to see the parking lot, anybody? It's small. 29 acres can be a lot of ball fields. And everybody bringing their kids from every which direction, they're all going to have a car. A big car, probably, because they have kids and they're hauling everything. That is a very tiny parking lot. And the overflow definitely is going to now, since the ditch got filled in by Crown when they were reworking that whole area, they're going to be pulling off the side of the road. Kelly Road is very narrow. It is not a safe place to park. So that, I think number one, that that parking lot is, is very under it's not meeting the need, won't be meeting the needs of what is going to be happening out there. And then if it gets saturated with water in these gravel parking lots, you're going to have all the rocks and everything else, and no one's going to want to park there, so they're going to be tending to want to be off of Kelly Road, parking on a grassy spot. So I just don't understand why you would even consider not doing it and why you would even give a variance. It's just perplexing to me. I just don't understand.
I can respond. Uh, so, um, so it was, it's, it's a temporary park, they're looking for a temporary parking lot, right? The, the plan is to do a perm, the park district's plans to do a permanent parking lot there, but they don't have a master plan for the name of the park yet in place, and they're working in that, for us, working on funding. Um, I know their, their intention, I can't speak for them, but their intention is to get that funding next year and then complete the master plan for the park and that would be the parking lot. The reason they want to gravel right now is because they don't know exactly what the master plan is going to look like. It might be a different one. Uh, most likely, the indication is that it will be larger. Um, and it will be paved, obviously, as required by village ordinance, but this is just a temporary variance request.
So this is just temp?
Yes.
Okay, is it, was it clear at all? I thought that was just going to be gravel and the other stuff, isn't it?
Yep, that was the, yeah.
And then?
Dog park is permanent, yes.
So the temporary gravel, who pays then when it becomes a permanent pavement?
That'll be the park district. Our obligation to our annexation agreement is that we, we grade and see the park, which we've done a few years ago. Uh, and then provide $65,000 worth of improvements in whatever form and fashion the park district wants, wishes. And so after meeting with them, their desire was for us to build gravel parking lot and the bike path, which equates, again, to just a little over $65,000.
So when you turn it over, you will, your obligation will be gone, and then the park district and the taxpayer funding takes over from that point.
They'll, I presume, it's my understanding, they're soliciting grants for that, those improvements. And they've been pretty successful, I've received.
How long do things stay temporary?
I can't speak for park district.
Is there a?
But I know their desire is, I know when I, when I did speak, what their desire was to, to complete the improvements, uh, next year, but I can't say when for sure.
So when you give a variance for temporary, there is no timeline on that?
That's up to us.
Okay, so that could be built into it if, so that it doesn't. Okay. Okay, well, that sums up a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Gabrielle?
Um. Very naive. Um, this is just regarding this.
I can't hear. Yeah, this is just regarding this part.
Done? Yeah, right now. It's for the top truth, whole truth, nothing but true.
I do. So just to declare, we were all given a registered letter. They had this meeting tonight for a variant. To leave the temporary parking lot gravel, correct, and no one's here from the park district? Is there going to be a chance for, to meet with the representative of the park district, or are we just gonna?
We're an advisory board. Won't give the advisory, and then it'll go to the village board for a fight.
Okay, so this temp parking lot, you're, they're asking for a variance, not to pave it.
Correct.
This has been turned over and re-rated multiple, multiple times. So it, it part is $55,000, part of that. $65,000? Because there has been a different, a different construction crew over there for the last three months turning this over. And I believe, because I'm in construction and all the time and money wasted in doing that, you could have paved it. I, I just, I am, I'm worried about the fact that if it gets left gravel, just like someone else said, there's going to be ruts, this and that. And if they allow temporary ball fields there, I don't know how many stalls that that is set up or, or, you know, intended to do, but there's no way it's going to be big enough for anything temporary or not. I just don't want to deal with cars parked in front of my house or on my lawn, because then we're going to have a problem. And I'm sure I speak for everyone else in this room. We don't have, we, we have no desire, none of us, to have that happen. We all take pride in our property. And of course, we want to see the development in Hampshire move forward. None of us want to step in front of that happening. But we all got to be mindful and considerate and reasonable with all this construction and development going on. It has to be handled properly, and as far as I'm concerned, this is this isn't. That's all I have.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. Is he, does he have any other questions? Yeah. Take one for the public, right? So to put on the record that we asked again for any more comments, everyone defer. Uh, yes, but we came in through a motion, we go out through a motion.
So I just need a motion to close the public hearing at 7:21.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
A second.
Commissioner Rappich?
Uh, yeah, aye.
Commissioner Egger?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosetti?
Aye.
Commissioner Frillman?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say out loud, uh, so it's out in the universe, that we don't decide anything here. We purely advise the elected village board, uh, and they make the final decisions. So, um, yeah, we won't actually decide anything here, just, uh, other than what we're going to recommend. Put that out there.
Yeah, if we, if there was approval, the tanker, we would give it three years. And most.
Sunset clauses, we call that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
May I ask a question of, uh, Mr. Crown?
Oh, yeah.
Do we know, um, Kelly Road, is that township, is that, is that, uh, county?
Uh, it's both township and village. So the portion, if you look on the page, one of them, agenda supplement, the portion is kind of highlighted in yellowish, I guess. Um, where that gold black line is.
Is there?
Yeah, that's village jurisdiction and everything. There's no black line. That's township jurisdiction.
Okay. Who makes improvements if Kelly Road needed to be repaid or something?
I think the, I'm, I'm not 100% certain, but I think there's an agreement with the township that either the township or the village maintains the whole road, shared cost.
And safe to assume there's no legal parking on Kelly Road?
Not that I'm aware of.
And that would be an Elgin, or sorry, Elgin, old havoc. Is that a, uh, a Hampshire Police Department or?
I can check right now.
Again, I know, I, I'm catching you flat footed, so I apologize.
No. I have a laptop. Let me check the park regulations. So there's a general one that says that any place where standing of a vehicle would reduce the usable width of a roadway with traffic to less than 18 feet. And knowing that Kelly Road is narrow as it is, I think that would, they qualify for it, but let me keep checking.
Okay. I have one more button while he double checks that or gives him some time. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, it's not listed specifically Kelly Road as one of the no parking streets.
Okay. And we can enforce that? I suppose to the sheriff?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any comments from the board during deliberation?
Any other comments?
In deliberation, I appreciate. I personally have concerns about gravel as a suitable walking surface when it comes to, um, the Americans with Disabilities Act. It sounds like the walking path that's part of the improvements of this lot is going to be paved. Um, and I just, one of my concerns is providing an accessible route for patrons to access that walking path and not being equitable. And I know, you know, federal guidance has said that gravel is not an accessible walking surface. And I want to make sure that, you know, anything that we provide is, you know, in, in our village, you know, meets the both state standards and federal standards. And that's, that's a big concern of mine in this, in this application.
Point, we'll take it.
Statement, which kind of is an open-ended question, or, uh, which dovetails into that. The previous, um, uh, variances we've granted, albeit with the sunset clause, were for corporations, private property, uh, businesses not for public use or open to the public, right?
Uh, there was one granted a couple of years ago, a few years ago, to the park district.
Okay.
Um, off of, uh, the Tuscany Woods subdivision.
Yeah.
So my, my issue is, the village is already set a precedence, because if we can't approve gravel lots for private citizens, we can't do it for a governing body. Everything that we've approved of the village is shot down. And we had to go with the concrete company this year that we approved, and the village said no.
My concern is right along with Grace, but as well for ball fields or something like that for acts, better access for emergency vehicles.
That's, yeah, that's tough. It's all well and good, but the park district is dictating to, to crown what they want. And already going over the budgeted amount, which is part of the annexation agreement. So, um, I mean, well, if we say no, where does that leave it? They can't, it can't be used then this fall for the park district? And I'm not that ours is the final decision, but if the board follows suit.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just, just a thought I had, um, and I'm not sure if it's, if it's a good thought or not. Uh, the parking lot on the other side for the dog park is paved, and there is a pedestrian, a paved.
Part, part of that, excuse me for cutting you up, but only part of that is paved. The other part is all gravel.
Um, the, the parking lot on the other side of that outlot, the gas company outlot?
Oh, I apologize.
That's fully paved.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fully paved, and there is a path connection, a paved path connection all the way, um, through that from that parking lot to the parking, the gravel parking lot and to the ball fields. So, I mean, that would meet ADA requirements.
I, I, it does not meet ADA requirements. Those are seen as separate facilities under chapter five of ADA provisions and therefore need to be sized appropriately and dealt with as separate facilities, because they are physically separated. That is.
Just, yeah, I, I'm not natural on ADA, but I just know that still, there's just, there is a paved parking lot over there that's available.
That is a facility.
Sure.
And if they use that parking lot, they would have to cross the street to get to.
They would.
Uh, they would. Which, which causes a problem for.
Yeah.
Disabled people.
Sure. They would, they would not cross, it would be, the dog park is right here.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's, 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 we're completing the dog park right now. The paving, parking lot and paving is, is complete. And there's a path connection to Kelly Road. There's a path next to here, but um, there's a path connection from that parking lot through, this is all part of the park district dedication. There's a, there's a path, paved path to connect to the gravel.
And so this, thank you. It seems to me, seems to me we're putting a curfew on the horse here. Their request is to approve a gravel parking lot so that the park district could conduct sports events in the fall. My question is, if this parking lot didn't exist, or if the subdivision didn't even exist, where would the sports be conducted? I'm sure they would be conducted some other place.
That, that was in the applicant's letter. Um, they had. That, that was in the applicant's letter, um, they had addressed concerns about the turf at their existing facilities and that this facility extending those existing facilities life by getting more people moved over there so their turf had the chance to rest or something to that regard.
Yeah, the soccer fields, uh, I forget which park it is, that is, uh, over by the pickleball court. But those, that's just an over glorified drainage lot, uh, what we've been using for soccer field since before. Uh, so, yeah, it's not turf, it's just whatever can grow there. Yeah, what we've been using up till now.
But going back to, you know, the, the minimum requirements for a variance, you know, I, I know staff put together a fantastic agenda su- supplement with their explanation of the proposed findings of facts and how that, you know, dovetails into our zoning, uh, code requirements of chapter six. Um, I'm just trying to better understand. The, the question comes down to finances and the the explanation given here is that, you know, it's lots of, lots of asks, not a lot, not enough funds, um, and like, you know, Commissioner Philman has said similar similar arguments have been made by private entities that didn't move forward. So how did, how is this different?
So, it should be hit a little worse for me because it's a government body.
Means discretion of the board's own, their conscience, right?
It's the board votes as it feels appropriate under these circumstances and it's a determination on the, have the findings of fact and the factors set forth in our code, which tracks the law been met, and that's really where you're at, and I think I would like to say Mo did a fantastic job on the agenda supplement, very, very well done. Um, and you were presented with that, you have the statements of both sides and you have, um, you have the agenda.
Yeah, can somebody make a conversation, cause I haven't decided yet?
So if I can add one of the things that would add on as a condition of approval for the other variants that were granted were the sunset clause. They have to not add one to this one because we don't know what the timeline of the master plan is and when that's gonna be done, but that's something that we discussed by the board, if you would like to add a condition of approval for a sunset clause of whatever time period you think is appropriate or whether, because they don't have a master plan in place, they don't know how long it's gonna take, whether a sunset clause is appropriate.
The big ask for, having no plan. Big ask of taxpayer dollars for no plan.
Well, he said they've been giving grants, but he doesn't speak for them.
Grants still come at.
I'm gonna repeat myself, it seems to me we're bringing the cart before the horse. They're asking us to approve a variance because they haven't, they haven't finalized their master plan. You've mentioned that the master plan will be finished or would be ready for publication in twenty weeks.
Yeah, I, I, I can't, I can always speak to my conversation with the park district, but I cannot speak for the park district. But, uh, the indication was, there was, if I read her, her letter correctly, um, is that they, they've applied for, on another park, it applies for some, some grant money and they're expecting to get that, I think, early next year and they're gonna use that grant money to complete the master plan for this park and along with wherever that parking lot orientation would be. Um, the other thing I know she expressed to me is, this is, you know, without the parking lot, you know, they, they, they will have you know, we could, we're probably still beated to them, but they won't be able to have any, any, um, any activities there. And it's her concern that because the park district is growing and the enrollment is growing and the number of teens are growing, they were looking for an overflow kind of place where they can have this on a temporary basis, but the indication I got, and like, yeah, I'm not speaking for the park district, was that, you know, they would finalize those plans next year and make it a permanent paid parking lot. It's just a temporary.
Is, is there? I'm, I'm thinking outside of zoning code, I'm thinking of temporary structures. Is there a timeline on like a circus tent, uh, temporary structure? You, you, do you know what I'm, i- is there, is there a precedent for temporary needs or is, is that truly the sunset clauses that we've discussed about previously, which seem to be in years? Is there anything that's, you know, precedent that's different? Or could it be for a season? I, I don't know.
Yeah, that, not sure.
One suggestion, because we seem to be ahead of our head because of the lack of information almost. Or as a wise commissioner, um, said, cart's ahead of the horse. Do you wanna ask the park district to come in on the application and talk about that to explain how the cart is not ahead of the horse, a fancy legal term we use is called richness, is this controversy ripe for review? And if, if, if filling in the blanks is needed by the park district, you can give them the opportunity to recess this or continue it and have the park district come in, explain their petition and then go on from there. That is one option that you do have here, if we wanna at least hear, I guess, the full story, right? Um, cause I think it sounds like you might vote one way or might vote the other, but there are some gaps in the story that are kind of leading people to go all the way to the other. I'm not a fan of continuing stuff, I think, I don't think Mo is either. Um, but if it's to gather additional evidence, to gather additional facts, maybe it's the best course.
Under the circumstances, I agree.
I don't. Somebody tonight, then they're not gonna, the courtesy's not gonna change.
I understand. I hate to come to this juncture again.
You know, continuing this is gonna change my mind at all.
A terrible suggestion on my part.
Yeah, you know, as far as the petitioners, it's still our property, right? So it's our petition.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought the part given, okay.
No, no, yeah, still, you know, we have not. I'm the guy, yeah, and again, we were just working with the park district and, you know, you know, honoring their wishes. Um, it will be beated to them at some point in time, right? Um, but, uh, so I, I would say as a petitioner, I think, you know, the path, similar ones occurred apparently before in the district as far as, uh, length of time, putting a, a limit on how long it can be a temporary parking lot. It's certainly acceptable to us, I don't know if it is of the park district, but we're the petitioner, we're not, so that's acceptable to us, um, again, our our goal was to just accommodate them as best we could, because we have a very good relationship, good partnership with the park.
They're getting their merch, I'm sorry, they're getting their marching orders, I thought you hit a period, I apologize. Uh, they got their marching orders from the park district, we are essentially voting whether or not we're gonna allow the park district to have a separate thing, it's not him. Right, technically, but he's just doing whatever they're asking.
And, and also, I mean, it's, it's per an extension agreement, yes, but also, we are trying to help them out with, with any that they're experiencing right now. Cause it'll probably be our residents utilizing that part as well.
Uh, under your agreement, um, you know, you have the obligation for the sixty-five thousand dollars of impervious. Um, would your, would you anticipate if this was hypothetically granted and a temporary parking lot was installed? At that point, you transfer ownership or would there be?
Yes.
Okay.
We would transfer ownership, um, as soon as we could, to be honest, if, if, if the commission and the, and the board, you know, feels it is acceptable to have a temporary parking lot, then we would grant it to them so they can utilize it this fall. Obviously, we're coming into the fall season right now.
Okay, and in your, your civil stormwater requirements for this property, is there a certain amount of impervious surface that you've accounted for that you're kind of planless or?
Yeah, so, so we, um, the engineer of the plan, as, as you, as we are petitioning for, but it's a gravel parking lot, uh, has been reviewed by the village engineer and, you know, as far from a stormwater standpoint, we didn't make improvements along Kelly Road, you know, for the, the ditch line to make sure it flows. Um, and it is acceptable, the village engineer to sign off on the engineering for, as is, as far as the Hampshire, uh, park district's ultimate plan, which will certainly include more impervious surface, um, and buildings, most likely. Um, they would have to snip their own stormwater plan, there's, there's no way, and, and with that presumably some type of detection. You know, that would meet the requirements of K kind of stormwater ordinance. But that would be another petition to the village.
And I'm asking you something off the top of your head, approximately, do you know the size of the gravel parking lot that we're hypothetically talking about?
Yeah, no, um, I should, uh, unfortunately, I don't recall what it is exactly. But I can, I can sure of it then.
How many cars do they?
I do it a lot of time, unfortunately, I, I didn't take a look at it before the state.
There are how many cars, you'd be lucky to get twenty in there.
Well, you know the size, sir?
I don't know the size dimensionally, no, but by looking at it, since we live right across the street, you're lucky to get twenty cars in there. It's not striped, there's no definition as to where the stalls are gonna be and where who's gonna park where.
Well, that really.
It's very narrow.
That really makes me question, how is this parking lot gonna serve ball fields? Talk a lot more than twenty cars.
It's the sort of overflow, right, not, it's not gonna be their primary location, I don't believe, I think it's the sort of the overflow, the ex- the extra teams that they got for practice against, but I, again, I can't speak for the park district.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, we ask for a motion.
Make a recommendation regarding case PZC two four oh five.
What is the recommendation though?
There's a standard motion to make. To recommend denial or recommend, recommend approval. Regarding case PZC two four oh five.
Give the motion and there'll be a second. Uh, second, I'll second the motion so we can just get it heard, get it voted.
Okay, um, so the motion currently is to approve.
To recommend.
To recommend prove. Commissioner Rampage.
Aye.
Commissioner Egger.
Nay.
Commissioner Rosetti.
Absolutely, nay.
Commissioner Philman?
Nay.
Uh, myself, nay. So that failed?
We should pass.
Do we wanna make a motion to reject them? Cause we haven't, we haven't.
Yeah, yeah, you, yeah.
So then, yeah, that's Commissioner Rampage, what is? Reclamation to deny.
Do we wanna make that motion or, cause right now it's.
I'll make an entertaining motion to deny case PZC two four oh five.
Um, second.
I'll second.
It's first.
Egger, Egger first, second by Rosetti.
Commissioner Rampage.
Nay.
Commissioner Egger.
Aye.
No, you wanna strike it down?
I wanna strike it down.
Yeah, she did right.
Yeah.
An affirmative vote means you wanna strike it down and send it to the board that says, don't approve this.
Right.
Affirmatively rather than ambiguous, we didn't approve.
Right.
This thing.
Commissioner Rosetti.
Aye.
Commissioner Philman.
Aye.
Myself, yes.
Well, she hears.
So this will go to the board at the next, those four reading, which is September nineteenth for final consideration.
Receiving all business? Any announcements?
Yes, so I just wanna give the, usually I like to give planning zone commission updates on cases heard by planning zone commission that go to the village board, so four eleven Champion Drive, which was a variation for the shed of the easement that was approved, um, by the board and then the tax amendment prohibiting internally illuminated wall signs. Uh, they did not follow the planning zone commission recommendation and approved the tax amendment, so it's a prohibitive.
Who's the count of the vote?
Uh, the first one, I believe, was six zero. Second one, I believe, was also six zero, but I'll double check, I can file off it in the email.
Just curious.
Uh, I will entertain the motions from adjourned at seven point six.
So moved. Somebody can help me out with?
Commissioner Rampage. Commissioner Egger.
Aye.
Commissioner Rosetti.
Aye.
Myself, yes.